Okay, guys, we're live, Facebook Live. So, just as an intro, normally the Board of Alderman meet for our work session for our upcoming meeting of Tuesday, which will be our first meeting in February. This time we have a presentation from Joe McHiggins with the link, and we've invited the Board of Supervisors of Ockham County to join us for this presentation because this is something that impacts both entities. And so, he's going to, I'm gonna go right to him to allow him to go ahead and start that presentation. But that's just to let everyone know who's seeing this, that the room is filled with Board of Supervisors, Board of Alderman, and of course, we have our usual department heads. It's also open to the public, so we have press, et cetera, here. So, Mr. Higgins, if you would.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, some of y'all will have seen this, we had an informal work session with everybody at Mississippi State the other day. The other day to go over this, let everybody kinda digest it, and, you know, here we are, I'm gonna do it again so everybody can do. So, those of you that were sent through the last one, I'm sorry, we'll try to be quick, but maybe you thought about something. So, we're gonna go over our budget for our project, we're gonna go over three projects that we're gonna bring to you, and then we're gonna spend some time talking about FELU, a concept, and how we can use that to help win a project, okay? And the intent is, y'all meet on 17th, county meet on 17th, is that right?
Yes, 'cause we meet on the 18th.
Yeah, so the intent is, if we get Greenlight Gold from both parties, is that we would be in front of the supervisors on the 17th, asking for approval on this stuff, and be in front of the City Council on the 18th, asking approval for the stuff, and then we'll let the lawyers handle it after that, okay? And then get all the paperwork and stuff done. Let's, I wanna give you another batch of parks, so North Star Industrial Park, go ahead, Betsy. This is an outline of the park, the road has been built, the east-west road, the north-south road, water, sewer, all those things have been built. We've got two improvements that have yet to be built, let's click on the first one, the signs, and those are in progress. The signs have been designed, it's my understanding, Mayor, that there's some other sign improvements that are gonna be made around town to some other existing signs.
All we're doing is looking at adding the entrance sign to the city of Starkville that OCDA has done around other entry locations, so now that this one's about to become a primary entry for the North Star as well as the north side of town, we're gonna add a sign, an entry sign to that that shows the city of Starkville. It will mirror the other ones that are in the community, so.
Okay. So, this is the sign, Tennessee Valley Authority designed these signs, they've got a technical service group, we've worked with them, used them a lot, gave them the concept, they've written the specifications for everything, and given it to Saunders so that he can bid. There's a night view, a side view, when you drop in, two signs on each side, both say the same thing, backlit for night, that's kinda what the signs are gonna look like. If somebody says no, go to the next slide. So, those will be the entry ways. The water tank, I won't spend a lot of time talking about the water tank, but the water tank, originally, we're gonna pay for the water tank out of our bond proceeds, we got a grant from TBA of about $350,000. We got a commitment from ARC for a million dollars for the water tank. In the environmental review, and it's important, now you got two federal agencies, one of them Greenlight Gold, and the other one got one letter from a sore head that said there's a lawsuit, and the project got held up forever and a night. As soon as the lawsuit was rejected, ARC released the funds, that, we have bid it one time, the project's cost came in a little high, that goes through the OCDA process, OCDA authorized to rebid, I think we're in the process of rebidding right now. Somebody asked the question, when do you think the water tanks will be built? I think the water tank will be built this fall, should be finished by this fall, okay? And the water tank, but back up, Betsy, it's gonna be right on the corner, right on the corner, when you come off Highway 82, going up to the park, right there at the corner, and this is what we anticipate that it'll look like. Composite tank, I think we're taking bids on four and 500,000 gallons, so depending on the cost, if we can get more. It doesn't really merit to build anything bigger, Terry's over here, Saunders has told us, they don't think they'll have enough turnover of the water or anything bigger, so at four or 500,000, that's kinda the magic size. So, that's what the park will look like. Now, let's give a recap of what's going on in the park. Garen, all y'all know, you've already taken action, you don't have to do anything else on Garen. Garen's been deeded about an eight acre site, they're working with their engineers, doing design, I know Mayor Chris Latimer, Chris Pace, and our team had some calls with them the other day on some of their design stuff. I would anticipate when the weather gets right, they'll start building. Go ahead, Betty. We think this is kind of a representative footprint of what we think it's gonna look like. The total project cost is higher than what we thought to begin with, we thought it was gonna be around three million, they've kinda added a lot more offices, a lot more fancier of a building, they're about five million dollars. Again, your share, that's already been approved, is gift of land, gift of land and $400,000 in site preparation. That will come out of the bonds, and we'll show you in a little bit how that happens. Garen's share is about $4.6 million. So, Garen is, and I apologize if any of these folks have got any questions, so that's Garen. Okay, am I good?
Any new debt jobs associated with that?
No, but if you look at the MOU, if you look at, first of all, we didn't know this, Mr. Biden, we didn't know this, that is original headquarters, and it qualifies under the state definition of original headquarters. There are five vice presidents of Garen domicile here, and I forget them all, HR, manufacturing, transportation, and IT, and one I never can remember, and their support staffs are all there. What's in the MOU that they'll maintain is a lower number than they work now, but it's well in excess of 100 people that work there now, and the wages, I don't remember off the top of my head, but they are considerably more average wages than the county averages. But, no sir, could the building be expanded? I think you could, but we don't anticipate that they haven't told us they're gonna do any of that. Let's go to the next slide, 'cause that's Garen. The next project I wanna talk to you is a building pad. Tennessee Valley Authority has a program called Invest Prep. Invest Prep was set up to help communities have product, that's what they call land, building, and stuff like that, have product, even parks. The $350,000 that you're getting on your water tank is a TBA Invest Prep grant. We went back to them and said, we wanna jumpstart development here, a lot of communities do this around the country where they build a pad, heard of a pad-ready site? Well, they go in and they do all the work, they build the pad, and somebody comes in, and the pad's done, so you can automatically start going vertically. They have given us, this is a representation of what we think we wanna build, in a 100,000 square foot spec building pad, total project cost, and these numbers all come from Neil Saunders and Neil Schaefer. $952,000, TBA has given us $275,000, and we're gonna be asking y'all to put the balance at 677, and probably, Mr. Latimer, how we'll phrase that in our deal is not to exceed 700,000, I'm not think we're gonna do 677, 677, not to exceed 700,000 to do this. So, on that 17th meeting, on that 18th meeting, the first ask will be, will y'all agree to match the TBA Invest Prep grant to allow the pad to be built?
It's, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
It's just the pad, it's not the parking lot and all that?
No, ma'am, he just did that, I think Saunders just did that, giving you kind of a feel and a look, yeah, it's 100,000. These are anticipated to be truck docks over here, that's not the Abrams or the truck docks or any of that stuff, okay? And again, the proceeds that we'll cover that minute are anticipated to come out of leftover bond proceeds, and are eligible, Mr. Latimer, Mr. Pace have concurred, these are eligible expenditures that you can do based on the bond ordinance that was passed. Okay, questions? So, that's action item number one, we'll be asking for approval of not to exceed 700 grand TBA Invest Prep grant, okay? Let's go next. Next thing we wanna do is build a speculative building. This pad and the speculative building, I want you to think of as bait. We've got a lot of companies that are looking for existing buildings. We had, Betsy, I'm gonna call on you, we had a company that was wanting existing buildings not too long ago, they were in the site, they were not manufacturing, they were cybersecurity, software, that kinda stuff, they were looking for a building of about 50,000 square feet. So, y'all know, we contacted our friends over here in the city, in the county, local realtors, Mississippi State University, and we cobbled together 7,500 square feet in Mississippi State, was as good as Mark could do, and as good as any of us could do. So, while I'm not telling you, that's the type of project we're gonna go after, they could certainly go in there, and it would be good, and we are wanting to build a speculative building 50,000 square feet, expandable to 100. We're anticipating gift of property and site preparation to Aggracel, that's our recommendation to Aggracel, who will then borrow the money from local lending institutions, buy the speculative building, carry the interest, all that stuff, okay? Now, this is where, if we do this project, this is where we could ask for y'all's help as well, because they will be going to local banks and local lenders to get them to make those loans, that's where we need some of your help, put the arm around your local bank and say, hey, look, this is not just a for-profit developer, this has benefited our community, we know you're not gonna give them free interest, but give them as favorable terms as you can give, that's important, that should be noted. This is what a representation looks like on that, and that's that lot right beside the pad. So, the vision I want you to think about is, you're gonna pull into the park, you're gonna have Garen under construction, you're gonna have a pad, pad-ready, you're gonna have a 50,000 square foot building sitting there, ready, and then you're gonna have additional vacant land. I oughta be able, we oughta be able to say, hey, you know, we got what you need, if you don't wanna build, if you don't wanna land, we gotta, we gotta pad, if you don't wanna pad, we gotta build it, or vice versa. And again, it's anticipated to be paid for out of the bond proceeds, we are at about two, and these are not, I know somebody ever looks and says, well, that's cheap for a building, these are not finished buildings, these are shell buildings, okay? So, not uncommon to have a rock floor, not uncommon to have minimal lighting, minimal ventilation until somebody comes in there and locates. You want some ventilation so they don't get mold, you want some lighting so you can see in there when it's dark, but it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be like an industrial building when you walk in and go, wow, it's not finished, okay? Local share of that is gift of land plus $365,000 in site preparation and pad, and again, Mr. Latimer, what we would probably ask for in the ask is not to exceed 400,000 dollars. And Aggracel will be responsible for borrowing the money, carrying the note, doing the deal. We do have, and this is not the first time we've done this with them, we do a lot of projects with them, we will have a buyout provision in there that we will negotiate that says, if a tenant comes in and wants to own their building, that we will buy them out. Now, it'll cost us some money to buy them out, not an exorbitant sum, I think in years past, it's been 100, 150, 200,000 dollars buying them out. A lot of that depends on how long they've been carrying the building, you know, they've been carrying it five years, it's gonna cost a little bit more to buy them out than it would right after it got finished. We have had on occasion, and then in Lyles, do this right now, we had an occasion where we bought, where the company didn't buy the building, we bought the building back from them, so we could use CDBG and state grant funds inside the building, being publicly owned to improve it. So, the document that'll govern all that will cover all opportunities and all, as best we can, and all scenarios, so we give ourselves maximum flexibility. But that keeps us as a community from having to carry the note and pay the payment on it while it's sitting there vacant. Any questions on that? So, that'd be the second ask, not to the gift of land and not to exceed 400,000 dollars in pad and site preparation for a speculative building, 50,000 square feet.
All coming out of bond proceeds.
Again, all of this will come out of bond proceeds. This costs us money, but it does not require us to go find a new source of money, if that makes sense, okay? Now, this is for kinda both places, we're gonna be building speculative buildings in Lyles as well. The building on the upper left and the lower right, our representation, representative buildings of what we anticipate your 50,000 square foot building would look like, okay? The other two are proposals, are other proposals in Lyles County, so we're using the same slide over there. But you can see, there's a substantial difference, the one in the lower right's a pretty cool looking building. So, we're not gonna be building shade and shelter and all that stuff, the developer understands landscaping, and it's gotta be nice, okay? And I think something like that would give a good look. You gotta understand, both the pad and this one is gonna have visibility from the front and the back, the back is actually gonna be more important to look good than the front because the back's what more people are gonna see. We'll go if y'all got any questions. All right, let's go. All right, next thing.
Oops, sorry, I was going the wrong direction.
Next thing is, and I wanted to show you, now that we've got a park, the lawsuit's been decided, we're out promoting, you are in the running for Project Royal, Project Royal is a 100 million dollar project, we're proposing you to go right there by the speculative building. This is a snapshot of what it is, when you think textiles, people think they have a blue jean pants, or cutting soles, stuff like, it's in the textile arena, but it's advanced textiles. Those of you that got ties to Mississippi State somewhere, you know, this stitch composite stuff that they're doing, that would qualify as textiles, but it's advanced. And I tell you, it's bowling, okay, I'm not saying that, but I wanna give you an example of what that is, about 200 jobs, 100 million capital investment, so it's FELU eligible, and a $35,000 wage. I wish the $35,000 wage was higher, okay? It's still, that's one job, it's still higher than the family average for Ockham County, but quite frankly, we would strive for that to be higher. We will not incentivize and go after a project that pays less than any of our county averages, that's stupid. We wish this would be more, but at this stage of the game, sometimes companies hit it right, sometimes they hit it wrong. And it's not just pay, it's water, it's sewer, Terry Power, I mean, they'll tell you they need all the power in the world, and they use three quarters of that, or half of it, or a third of it, the same thing here. So, we're not gonna take ourselves out of the game on this, yes, ma'am?
Because when you say things like that, you set an expectation, the 200 jobs created, that would be fully developed, not initially necessarily, but fully developed?
Well, this is not a multi-phase project.
Okay, all right, so.
So.
So, it's not a Yokohama kinda thing?
No, let's make the expectation there. Years and years ago, when the state incentivized the project, provided incentives, they gave 36 months for the jobs to be created. When 2009 happened, they started giving 60 months, five years. These are all negotiated deals, but the deals we're seeing right now, and the one we're working on in West Point right now, I think we're at 48 months to get to full deals. Understand, any of these projects are gonna take at least a year to build.
Sure, sure.
And quite frankly, a lot of them, the bigger or more complex equipment, 18 months is not an unreasonable amount.
Sure.
And then staffing, they can't walk in and hire 200 people day one.
No, and that's.
But, so the expectation there would list, for one measuring expectation, let's say within 60 months from announcement that they would be, that they would create the jobs.
Okay, and that's.
I think that's fair.
And I think that sets a more reasonable expectation in the paper and in the public. The $35,000 average wage, so you're gonna.
Those are usually not inclusive of benefits.
Okay, so those would be wages, but there would also be probably a lot of people at 25 to 28,000, and other people making considerably more.
Correct. Anytime we give you an average, that's.
It's an average, right, but people hear that as a starting salary.
Oh, I understand that, I mean, and put a face on that, the steel mill pays $117,000 average, that's their average wage.
But the range is?
Well, there's people making considerably less than, but there's some people taking it out there in a cobra sack, I mean.
Always the way.
Yeah, okay, questions about Project Royal?
Yeah, could you talk about the requirements for acquiring these jobs as you go?
Well, so, we have submitted an RFP on this, the only thing that we have committed y'all to in our RFP is we anticipate that we will gift the site, okay? That we will gift the site, and we always put a predicated deal in there that this requires approval.
I guess you didn't understand my question, my question is, what is requirement for a person to be able to be able to work?
Oh, we don't know that yet, we don't know that yet. We don't know that yet. Skill sets, I think these are semi-skilled, go ahead, McCollum.
These will be majority middle skill type occupations, requiring somewhere between what could be a long-term credentials, like an eight-week to longer, or a two-year degree, most of the jobs are gonna fall in that category. Later in the process, they'll give us some specific information about what kind of occupations we're looking at, and we'll be able to more accurately give you an idea of how much training they'll need, do we have that training here, and what it would take a person to be able to meet those job requirements. It's gonna be a little bit before they tell us.
SOC codes?
Yes, SOC codes.
No, explain it, bam.
There are occupational codes that are national codes, and they give us a specific description of that job title, so it may say, advanced manufacturing maintenance technician, and we'll know that that maintenance technician correlates to a couple of years of school, and they offer that program in the maintenance technician program at EMCC, and that's what it would take, you'd have to have that degree or that certification to get that job right there.
Once they give us their SOC codes, we've got the expertise in-house and out-of-house EMCC to figure out what that looks like, they haven't given us their SOC codes yet, okay?
But what you're saying, you don't think that at that level, that's gonna require a two-year associate's degree to?
On the maintenance side, it will, but on the regulatory side, it's very likely not, okay? So, it won't be either or, it'll be, you know, some will be four-year requirement degrees, some will be two-year requirement technical specialized degree.
Both of them will be.
Some of them will be, I get you to come in, go through about two weeks' training, I'm gonna let you loose on the machine, you're gonna do what you do.
When you're a job, it's a.
Yeah. Okay, any more, those are the questions, everyone? All right? You know, I'm trying to invite myself over to do all this stuff all the time, but it might not be a bad idea as a training process sometime for us to bring in RFPs and let y'all see what they're asking for, and what we have to submit, what the question is, and what the answer is, so y'all sorta kinda know, probably wouldn't hurt, we'll do that.
I think it'd be fun, we'll cover that at some time in the future.
That's your action item, as they say. All right, let's go. All right, now I wanna talk to you about Project Trinity. Understand, the media's here, understand, we're on Facebook Live, and there are people out there that would like to hurt us and keep us from winning a project just because they would like to hurt us. This is a project that is kind of a once-in-a-lifetime project, as I see it, it's very unique in that they want three locations in three different spots, you are one of the locations that we have selected, and this is the site for the project. It is very, very energy-dependent in that, Terry, I'm gonna put you on the spot, what's your total, what's your start, your system, what order are you in? How much?
110.
110, okay? City Starkville's 110 megawatts, this is 100 megawatts, so it's, well, so, well, so, well, but that's just like what you was talking about, now you got something to compare it to.
A good comparison, the steel mill uses as much power to light up the city of Memphis.
Yeah. Steel mill's TBA's biggest customer, 360 megawatts, this facility would use 100 at this spot.
The new substation's gonna have what?
That substation won't serve this, it's gotta be dedicated, gotta be built, gotta be specific for, all that stuff, okay? So, we're gonna show you that, okay? So, this is the site, this is your site, this is Starkville, Ockham County site, and it's a multi-phase project, and so, we're gonna walk you through that, then we're gonna go back and talk about money, then we're gonna talk about FELU, so, let's click on, let's show them, this is the footprint, we anticipate that the project will be four buildings, they ask us for planning purposes, we would like to see if we can build eight on each site, that's okay, that's okay, and what you see, there's eight, that's not what we're, that's not what we're saying will happen, but there are eight there. You will see over there, they have a dedicated pumps, or substation, under that 161, TBA has signed off on, there's approvals haven't been made, but that is about an 8.45 million dollar substation that has to be built, times three, one, two, three, dedicated. That's yours, that's where we're putting the substation, dropping it right there under the 161. Your other substation is over here, okay? But they don't wanna be served out of that, they want their own, you know, they want their own dedicated substation, they don't wanna share with nobody, okay? So, that's that, what you see there are some interior roads, water, and sewer improvements. Let's go, we don't have, we're not gonna cost money yet, right, okay? So, let's back up, back up, show the drawing, any questions about Project Trinity? Project Trinity has been here, we are in conversation with them on a regular basis, we are asked what do you think timelines are, we think we're gonna get another tranche of information at the end of the first quarter, first month of the second quarter, we think that they'll make a decision by the end of the calendar year. And that's not what they told me, that's what they told me, that's what they told some of the highest ranking people in the state Mississippi government, so I'm just carried to what they told me. Questions on that, as best we can? There's eight buildings on there, when we get to the model, we start talking about money, each one of those buildings costs $250 million a copy, 250 million a copy, building and internal stuff, okay? We're gonna go to the budget, nobody's got any questions? 250 million a building, and we anticipate there'll be four buildings, so that's where we come up, there was some confusion, I think somebody had the other day, someone said, I don't think you meant a billion dollars in each location, yes, I meant a billion dollars in each location, okay? And for those that wanna get on Facebook and log, if that's unreasonable, and it's not real, well, it's, I knew this shit were living. All right, let's go, let's go to budget. What we're trying to do here is give you a run total, and these are not final, 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 but for budget purposes, right now, they're about as good as we can give you, and I'm gonna go on line by line out of it. Property acquisition, we don't think we'll spend any more money, we budgeted a little over 4 million, we've got about $70,000 in savings, this is due to April, it wasn't, you know, what we calculated on Google Earth, and the other one, we went out, did the survey, and elected not to do some stuff, there's some land that we didn't buy, that we anticipated that we might buy, so, so $70,000 we've had in savings on property. Cultural mitigation, y'all remember, when we started out, we said we think there's $3 million worth of cultural resource work that we've gotta do. If y'all go back to you old timers, remember, we went back to the landowners and asked them to fly to the base college with us and discount their property by $2 million over what we had an option for, and we said, if the cultural resources cost less than $2 million, we will pay you a pro rate share, each landowner, you remember this, Chris, money back. If it goes over $2 million, it's our cast to lick, and we budgeted about another million dollars in there, because that was Walton and T. Morris's settlement, about $3 million. We elected, some sites were right on the edge of properties, out by Highway 82 right away, there was, we elected not to perform some work on some of the. we did, we elected not to perform some work on some of the sites because they just, that we, that, that, that weren't going to impact what we were going to develop. Uh, uh, I'm not gonna tell you everything that's been done on that, so that's just boycotted and, and, and you can't get, but, but there were bodies, they were relocated, we did work with the tribes, and we followed all the rules that we had to follow with the two tribes, and archives of history, and everybody that did what they did. So, so we're green light, no, all we're doing now is a final report. Uh, all we're doing is final report, when you, when you back out, the cost of the final report, we think we're gonna have about nine-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand dollars left over, okay? Uh, that's due in part because we were conservative in our budget, because we couldn't, we couldn't get slow, and due in part because we didn't do some of the work, because when we got out there on ground, it just didn't matter. You know, it was just easier to waste this, this little fraction of an area and say we're not gonna develop it than it was to go ahead and spend the money and get every square inch ready to develop. So we got, we got about a million dollars of savings on culture, I'm gonna stop after everyone says, there's any questions? Okay? Road improvements, eighty-nine, we've done all the road improvements. Uh, actually, the change orders for some of the clearing and growing that you saw out there was done under the road budget via a change order, and so even with that, we've got about eighty-nine thousand dollars left over in roads. And again, sorry, everyone. Well, why you got this much saved? Well, understand, when you're doing a project like this, we can't come back to y'all and ask for more money. We gotta sit down with the engineers and say, "Give us the best number you can give us conservatively, that's a good number, that's not too high, not too low, but please don't ask us to go back and ask for more money." Okay, so, there's gonna be some that go, "Well, we issued more bonds than we had to." Yeah, you did, okay? Now you gonna ask them off too. Road improvements came in at eighty-nine thousand, under budget. Questions, comments, anybody? Water improvements, a hundred and two, same thing. Water tank improvements, using the estimated costs that we think that was being rebid, that we think the water tank will cost, we think we're gonna end up with a hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars left, because we got the TBA money and the ARC money, okay? So what we're planning on doing here, uh, bringing this water tank up to here, up, 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 up here, where they can see it, okay? So what, what we're saying here is, we're gonna spend every dollar of the TBA money for the water tank. We're gonna spend every dollar for the ARC money for the water tank. So any savings that we're gonna get on the water tank, uh, uh, should be ours, and we think we're gonna end up with a hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars left over on our water tank budget, but we won't know until we get to final bids. Uh, lighting, we think we're gonna end up with a hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars more. Uh, I will tell y'all that, I was just out there a while ago, talked to four counties out there doing the lighting improvements, they worked with us, uh, been a good partner for us on that, uh, we were in the budget two forty-four, and I think we're gonna get it done for about a hundred thousand dollars instead of a quarter of a million. Uh, clearing and growing, because we did that in roads, we didn't touch this item. Uh, engineering, we should be good, uh, should be good contingencies, another, seven hundred thousand dollars. If you gotta have it in a project, well, since we didn't go over in anything, we didn't really have to touch contingencies. And then let's, let's go, entrance sign, um, entrance sign, uh, I think, uh, well, we don't know until we bid it, so, we don't know until we bid it. Just scroll up, Betsy. Uh, uh, permitting, reimbursement of cost, this is something that we told the city and the county, we budgeted three-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars just to reimburse y'all on costs you had, working up to this, that were eligible, some of that has been reimbursed, we budgeted, uh, three-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. We've only paid, uh, uh, a hundred-and-seventy-three thousand, so if there are any more bills that are eligible to be paid, city or county, we need them, so we get them paid. And then substation site prep, we got a little bit of money left over. Betsy, take this up here. Okay, so about two-point-eight million dollars is what we think we got to play with. Uh, you have already committed, uh, uh, signed the documents, approved four-hundred thousand for the site prep pad for Garrett. So, and that tells we'll take out the bonds, that's how we're doing it, we've got that. And then if you take your TBA pad out at the six-seventy-seven, six-seventy-seven, there's a lab on T, that's probably, it'd be seven-hundred, uh, two, seven-hundred thousand dollars, kicks it in. All right, and then the spec pad, that's the Agribank, they'll put that at four-hundred, four-hundred grand. We still got money left over, so, so under this scenario, you can do your, do your hundred thousand, you've done your Garrett deal, you can do your spec pad, do your spec pad and your, and, and, or your, your pad, you can do the spec building pad and still have money left over. So the good news is, we've done everything we want to do, got a little bit of house money that we can spend on enhancements, trying to make ourselves more protected. So we got three asks for you, no, two asks, money-wise. We're gonna ask you at the seventeen, eighteenth meeting to, uh, approve seven-hundred thousand, uh, dollars for the TBA investment match of two, and four-hundred thousand to spend on pad and site prep for the spec building. And then we'll, as you say, hold and see what, what, what the future brings on the balance of the money. We'll build our water tank, we'll do. Any questions on the budget? Before I go, what have you been feeling, feeling?
Will the building come out of that too, the spec building?
No, no ma'am, the developer will borrow the money to do that. Uh, the only, the only help we can do there is for our local bankers, say, "Hey, don't treat this as somebody's trying to do this." They are doing this as a private developer to make money, but they are working in conjunction with the city. So, you know, any help you can give them on regular terms, there is community benefit. I think, I, I don't think that's a twist an arm to our local bankers, I think it's just a, hey, and I think every one of them that I know would say, "Got it, we understand that." But they'll borrow their money, and their money will be a risk.
So the, the spec building, you're saying, if someone occupies that, we're giving them the pad, the building, the whole, everything?
No, you're, on the spec building, you're gonna be gifting the site, and you're gonna be gifting the, 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 the pad and site preparation money, not to exceed four-hundred thousand dollars. Your maximum investment in that spec building, unless we come back and change it, is four-hundred thousand, give the land one four-hundred grand. That's your maximum exposure.
Gotcha.
Now, ten it comes in, they wanna own it, they wanna use grants, they wanna do this, then it's, then it's kind of match, follow whatever, and doos is a while, okay?
That'll work? Thank you.
I just have one question. Uh, as you move forward, do you feel like you're meeting the needs of individuals from all walks of life and from all skill level?
Probably not, I mean, if the, if the, if answers, if the question is answered as truthfully as you can, all walks of life, probably not. Uh, but I don't know that we can ever meet the needs of everybody in all walks of life. In other words, there are some people that are just gonna be unable to work in the industry or the businesses of the future, because they don't have or cannot be made to have the skill set level to get those jobs. Uh, are we doing something that's gonna give opportunities for the majority of the people in the, in the city and the county that are here or could come here? Yeah, I think, I think so, I think it'll be a hot spot, I mean, you know, you got vice presidents at Garrett, but you've also got secretarial clerical folks, uh, data, you know, folks at the, at the, at the lower, what you might place by senior level positions. Uh, uh, all manufacturing plants are gonna have executives, they're gonna have middle, middle folks, and they're gonna have rank and file folks. Uh, I think if you use that as a definition, yeah, we're doing pretty, we'll be doing a pretty good job, okay? But like on Project Trinity, you're even gonna be specialized in cooling, electrical, or IT. Those are the three disciplines, and everybody can't do all of those. But a lot of people we know can do a lot of those, can do all of those, okay? Those are the three disciplines that'll be at that facility.
Joe, I was looking at the Federal Reserve, St. Louis Federal Reserve yesterday. In our median household income here, off Tewahaw County, substantially lower than Lams County, and that's because y'all got those big industries over there.
Lower than Clay County.
Lower than Clay County, and Clay County's not good enough. Um, and I, and I think I was here at the Super Bowl talking about this, but addressing that lower end is gonna lift, that, that kind of, what we, I, I think what he's saying, what I would hope is, we can start to lift all the boats, because we, we go, we got a research university here, and we've got a community college, a big community college here, we, we're gonna attract these big high-tech jobs that are gonna pay a lot of money to a, a smaller subset of people that, um, you know, if you do, I guess, it's not gonna lift folks down to the bottom, and, and that's, that's indicated in when we look at statistics like what I, what I saw here.
But, but here's the thing, with the university there, we got the train, we got the facility, the equipment, and the staff that are off, all that, all that's done is paid for, y'all helped do it on the ground, so somebody can up their skill sets. I mean, ma-
If they want to.
Huh? If they want to, and, and, and look, let me tell you something. Every one of us knows somebody says, "I was looking for a job," and you know how hard they're looking for a job? They can't even get off the porch to go look for a job. But, but, stand up, talk about, pick out somebody, Betsy. Betsy wants to upgrade her skill set, how she goes to EMCC, work keys, and, and, and quickly, but efficiently and well. She used her as your example.
If Betsy has a high school diploma, because to get any job in advanced manufacturing, anything that's gonna go on this park, that's, that's number one, whether it's a GED or high school diploma, Betsy can enter either as a student or as an adult at any of the programs through a number of funded opportunities, federal funding, state funding, um, there are a number of programs, no cost to her, where she can get entry-level qualifications, like certifications in OSHA safety, like certifications of, of the work keys. She can keep going and stick with it and get some more certifications, perhaps to work in those HVAC programs there. She can get and stack these certifications, eventually, if she wanted to get a two-year degree, she could do that, and move herself up the wage ladder. If she's in a lower-income job, what that does is that bumps her up in a higher-income job, and that frees open somebody to move into that lower-income job, moving your society up in the wage ladder. That's the goal, is that people who want to work and are able to be trained, get additional training to move up in the wage ladder, opens up opportunities underneath them, and somebody who's new to the workforce, wants to get back in the workforce, or for whatever reason can't make it up that ladder, can now jump into that open spot.
And it's, and it doesn't have to be a two-year degree. It can be a certification in HVAC, it could be, so, so, you know, and again, when people tell you they're looking for something, you know, are they going there? Because, because is it a fairly general true statement that they ain't turning people away?
Absolutely not.
Uh, uh, we'll find a way to get somebody trained?
There's an entire division there dedicated to making sure people overcome the obstacles that they have to get to where they need to be. That's no different than Mississippi State, it's no different at EMCC. There are teams and divisions of people and educational institutions to help people get to where they want to go, and there is plenty of funding there to help them along the way to do that.
And it's important to us for this, okay, because we're small and we're rural, okay? And, and for us to go where we need to go, Joe, we got to have every toe pusher, we got to have every able-bodied person that can, can do it, okay? So we don't throw nobody away, but, 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 but many of these jobs, see, you know, it gets me, you know, MBA count, well, we created so many jobs. Well, we don't, we don't, we count jobs, but we count jobs, we don't count jobs. You know what the most important thing for me is on these projects? Y'all know what it is? What, what, it's not jobs, what is it?
Capex.
Capital investment, why, Mayor? No, 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 you had the right answer, now, now come on with it.
Well, that's because I've heard you say it so many times, cheated.
Well, it's capex, because if a company comes in and invests a great amount of capital, what does that tell you?
It's growing.
That tells you that they're, that they're gonna have a lot of specialized equipment, that tells you that they're gonna have a lot of, uh, needs for trained people, and tells you that they're gonna pay more. You can draw a direct correlation, more, 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 more often than not, high capex, high pay. Also, fewer jobs.
Right, I, I heard you say something I thought was very interesting a few minutes ago. You said that some of these jobs will be jobs as you, some of those individuals will be told to come on, work the job for about six months, and, uh, and then, yes, we can have, give you the opportunity to, to man that particular job.
What, what, what I meant, what I meant to say, Joe, is, those are some jobs that if, if you came in and you worked in the, we, we hired you, and you worked in the plant, within about six weeks, you're self-performing, you know your job, you're good.
And, and I understand all of that, and I understand the career technical, uh, jobs that's available and the training that's available, but still, you're gonna still have some individuals who are not going to have, uh, technical, even technical degrees, two-year degrees, and, and two-year certificate too as well. And I think if you'll be realistic, some of us work jobs and start working jobs and made a good living. And I know things are not like they used to be, but we can strive to have some of these jobs available for individuals who don't, who would not have.
And we do.
Would not have a two-year, a two-year technical degree.
Yeah, and we do, and let me tell you, some of the, some of the selectives, uh, West Point's got Pico, they're gonna make chicken nuggets there, okay? Make chicken nuggets. But you know what the average pay there is? Seventeen bucks an hour. That's still, that's still about that thirty-five thousand, thousand, thousand dollar deal, average, okay? So there'll always be some, but let me tell you something, in, in society, I worry about it like, like, like a champ. Two things I wanna tell you I worry about like a champ. Uh, 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 there's, there's a lot of people, they don't get, if they don't, if they don't get skill sets, they're gonna get lost. They're gonna get lost, and I'll tell you the thing that scares the crap out of me, is Lance at, at Packcar said the most expensive robot he has in that three-quarters of a million dollar plant, three-quarters of a million dollar plant, uh, 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 is a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. And then most of the robots cost thirty thousand dollars, and he said they don't call in sick, they don't come in drunk, and they don't fight with their employer, with their peers. That's right, okay? All right, let's go, any questions more on the budget? So I think what the takeaway here is, we got the money to do what we want to do, to be aggressive, and we don't have to spend all the next day. When we did the bond issue, we had a choice to do it a taxable or non-taxable. We did taxable, which means you're not governed, you're not governed by having to spend that money in a certain period of time. Taxes and bond issues, you've got to spend, tax, taxable, you don't. So we can hold that money and wait for a deal, if it comes in, when it comes in, we, we can have that money, okay? Now, I'll talk to you about, and no question, I'll talk to you about a concept. Everybody good? All right, do we hand out, for those that didn't attend the last meeting and didn't get, we've got some calls to hand out? All right, so, in Mississippi, there's a thing called fee and loo. And you've heard it in the news, okay? You've watched it in the news, because quite frankly, in Lams County, we, we've done more fee and loo's than I think every other town in the state combined up until, up, up till about now. Um, in years past, there were projects over a hundred million dollars. You had to spend a hundred million dollars to qualify for a fee and loo. Couple of years ago, my peers and I worked, worked with the legislature, legislature, and we got that changed, and that threshold is now sixty. When it was a hundred, I will tell you that very few communities in the state could meet that threshold, just a, a few handfuls. At sixty million dollars with the, Joe, with the new investment in equipment and stuff costing more, sixty million dollars is a threshold that I'm gonna tell you that I think is theoretically possible for sixty or seventy percent of the counties, if not more, to land a project like that. Not saying they will, I'm saying it's theoretically possible, okay? So, so, we invented this concept, and nobody had ever done it before in Mississippi, and now it's, uh, next week, there's two different seminars at our state conference that are gonna be talking about this. Uh, Brother Snow, Jones Walker, and Watkins and Eager are on the panel to talk about this, and Kathy Gelson's gonna talk about, formerly with MSU of recent, is gonna talk about innovative ways to do, uh, incentives, and I understand that that's on her talking points. So, um, I think it's starting to be recognized as best practice, quite frankly with it. Um, so, so what we, what we, how we do these is we take the, fee and loo does this. If a normal deal comes, let's use Project Royal, if it comes to y'all, expect me to come to you and say they're gonna want a ten-year, well, no, it's a hundred million dollars. Uh, somebody goes in that spec building, that's fifty million dollars. Expect me to come to y'all and ask for a city and the county exemption of abhorrent tax for ten years. Expect me to ask that, you don't have to grant it, but expect me to ask that. On fee and loo, it's different. If they meet that sixty million dollar threshold, they pay one-third of school tax, one-third of city tax, and one-third of county tax immediately. So there, so instead of getting zero, you, for ten years, you get money. You get money, it's kind of simple. So what we do is we say, "Well, why don't we take a portion of that money that the city or the county gets and invest it in the project to try to win it from the other town down the street, up the street, up the road that we're competing against?" that we're competing against?" And it's kinda like, it can be anything from nothing up to eighty, ninety percent of what you're bringing in, and fee and loo pledged to that. People start worrying about risk, Sandra asked a good question last minute about risk. Well, when we did the steel mill, this is how we did the steel mill in Lyles, what we found out was, fee and loo is considered as a tax. In the case of bankruptcy, what gets brought, what gets paid first? Before GE Capital, before Bank of America, before all these lenders line up, taxes have to be brought. You have the ability that if the taxes don't get paid, this latter, we'll put it up for tax sale, and we'll sell it for the taxes.
Key word.
Every time, okay, you sell it for the taxes. You sell it for the taxes. The capital investment on these fee and loo's is gonna be such that they can move equipment, but it's kinda sorta hard to just move the whole damn thing. So you're always gonna get enough tax to make your debt service. So we don't see it being very much risk. Now, I wanna, I wanna segue and talk to you about Project Trinity, and then we're gonna go up here and get on the model, okay? Project Trinity, as I said, is a three-location spot. You're depending on West Point, West Point's depending upon GTI, GTI's depending upon Starkville. Um, we want you, and we're gonna ask you, so we got, we got three acts. We're coming, we're coming to the county and the city next month. Money for the pad, money for the spec building, and we're gonna ask you to do a notice of intent to issue bonds in the amount of not to exceed seven million dollars, okay? Now, paperwork's still gotta be drawn up, we're working on that, but, but, but understand this, some caveats. Uh, uh, to issue bonds on that, it's gonna have to be a fee and loo project. Uh, I'm okay if you put in, it's gotta be a fee and loo capable of paying back the seven million dollars. Uh, I'm gonna ask a caveat that, that the project be endorsed, brought to you, and recommended by us. 'Cause while I love all of you, I don't want somebody saying, "Ottawa County Lake's about to break, let's take this bond money and do that," that wasn't the intent, okay? So, so, I think between y'all and us, we can put enough handcuffs on there that, that, that we could all live with, that says, "This is the intent, and this is what is proposed to be done," okay? I, some of y'all heard this, the last time, something we talked about when people were coming in. Personally, I'm not a lawyer, but the phrase I use is, "Mississippi is a reverse referendum state." In a lot of places, if y'all wanna do something, you gotta say, "We wanna do this, we gotta put it on the ballot, we gotta get the people to approve it, and then you can do it." In Mississippi, it's different. Y'all can say, y'all two bodies can say, "We're gonna do this." And if the public doesn't want you to do this, then they gotta go out and get petition signed fifteen-hundred and call for the question. What we do for a living, we have to fly in a faith column just a little bit with y'all and with our clients and the companies and us. The confidentiality of this maintains, requires that we kinda get way on down the road sometimes before we do the final deal. Now, we always say, "It's subject to city and county approval, subject to city and county approval," but we use our value judgment system, whether it's fair, equitable, and do it. What we can't have happen is on a project, and this would be if it was not tied to the other communities, but, but, but it's particularly important, since it is. We can't say to somebody, "We're gonna do something," and then get up to the altar and have second thoughts about it 'cause we have an election. Your reputation will be forever damaged and ruined, and you will be tossed. You're, put a fork in ya, you're done. So, we've been doing this, this is not unique, we've been, there's only one county in the state of Mississippi that does this. And they've been doing this since two thousand and four. Y'all wanna guess who it is?
Lyles.
Lyles. When I got to Mississippi and I found out how this was, I said, "We ain't gonna, we're not exposing our stuff out that much." We went to Lyles County Supervision, and we asked them to authorize twenty million dollars in, in bonds. Do a notice of intent to do twenty million dollars in bonds for an eastern development project. Now, the documents are much more refined now than they were then, Chris, but, but, but still, yes, I mean, the concept was there. When John Corrigan, the steel mill, came in, and we said, "We'll put twelve million dollars in the project," he said, "How do I know you can do it?" We said, "It's already done, all it takes is a three, two vote, and it's done." And never was a three, two, it was five, five, five. But we had the money. As soon as that project happened, we did a notice of intent, and when Packcar came in, guess what? Ready to give. So we, we kept these going. These authorizations or notice of intents are only good for twenty-four months. So what we're gonna ask y'all to do, probably moving forward, if we're gonna, if we're married and gonna live with each other forever, is to get Chris and, and, and Rob to put a tickler in there, and in about the eighteenth or nineteenth month, start getting working, so you've always got that authority to do. That way, when we speak, we can speak frankly and, 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 and pretty forceful, that we can do what we wanna do, okay? So the last thing we're gonna ask you for is to do a notice of intent, and that'll be done by, by Chris Pace in our office, and Rob, and, and, and Chris, the Chris's, as we call them, and Rob, that we'll get something that, that all y'all can live with. And that will allow us, and, and, and so, you know, uh, we met with, uh, 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 Lyles County folks yesterday, we're gonna be going to them, to see them in February, uh, uh, and we're gonna go, be, be going to see the Clay County folks and do the same thing, so we're not asking y'all to do something that we're not asking them for. The other two is just counties, okay, 'cause their sites are in the county, here at city and county, because the site's in the city and the county, okay? That's what we're gonna be asking. Now let's show you what we're talking about, okay? Hey, hey, uh, couldn't say everyone's in there, sorry. Yeah, listen, listen, quick, 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 all right. So what we've done, and Betty, if you can, I want this slid over where they can see all three counties. It's a proprietary model that my boy Rain Man Joey Decen built, and my girl, Rain Girl, Betsy Young, uh, 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 has, has updated. And this lets us do analysis pretty quickly. Uh, we've even got an app on our phone, so we can do it when we're driving down the road. All right, so, this, this is, this is you. Now, good county there. That's if the project's only in Ottawa County, put the city back. That's if the project's in the city and the county. Now, since we're live and in person out there in the world, my advice always is, put your neutral park in the county, 'cause it's a low-end taxing entity, and companies will lock it better, okay? The reason that it's in the city here is because both of y'all mandated that you wanted it in the city, that you wanted to share the cost and all that. That was not the link's decision, that was the city and the county. Well, you know, you gotta correct stuff when it's wrong. That was the city and the county's decision, our class's decision. So, so, you're gonna be the only one that's in the city, the rest of these are in the county. And so it does change the equation, because instead of having three taxing entities in the model, or two, in the case of the uptake, here we have three. Okay, so let's talk about, let's talk about a project, let's, let's talk about Trinity. Seven million dollars is what we anticipate will be your contribution in that project, okay? And what that includes is cost of water, sewer, interior roads, and assumes give to land, which is not in the, in the number, and it includes two years of capitalized interest. So that when they're, well, 'cause we pay taxes in a reg, and it takes them a while to build. So we borrow two years' worth of interest in the bonds, and then we have a date definitive, even if it's not when the taxes are due, that the company has to pay the tax, okay?
So will you explain that just again, that that will mean that, within the flip fee and loo, that that means that the taxes will not be increased because of the interest rate?
I'm gonna show you, yeah.
Okay, well, I just wanted you to say it too.
Well, well, you can say it.
Okay.
But I'm gonna show you where you have the money. I know y'all, "We ain't raising your taxes," okay? Uh, uh, do you tell them when you do it?
Yes.
Uh, 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 so, so I want you to see how this sorta works. So, so, on Project Trinity, there's four buildings that cost two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars a copy, and we are basing this on one building. Kinda like the Monopoly game, they're gonna build one building, they're not gonna build in Starkville, and then two years later build in West Point, and then two years later build in GTI, it's not gonna work that way. They're gonna build, if they build a building near your place, it'll be one near place, it'll be one near place. And those buildings are two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars a copy. And we anticipate that the project will be four buildings, or a billion dollars. And if you looked at the drawing very closely, you saw eight buildings on the property, 'cause we've demonstrated that we can house up to eight. But for purpose of this exercise, a billion-dollar investment, here, two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars a tranche, and we're predating all of our initial offer on just the two-hundred-and-fifty million dollars. So we're not, we're not getting out there, way out there, hoping that we gotta have building two, three, or four built to support the deal. So, let's put two-hundred-and-fifty million in the company investment. And I'm not gonna put the job commitment in here because it has nothing to do with the model, because why? Doesn't really matter. We put it in there, we run it, but it doesn't really matter, doesn't affect the normal. All right, so if we said seven million dollars, and your number's seven point one, we decided the other day in the workshop, that's close, seven million dollars is close enough, so let's put seven million dollars in there. Now, this is where we have some fun. All of you have a different opinion, and it's okay. We always, if you ever are wondering how I do my math, twenty years, I'm, I'm sorry, five percent. Five percent. Do I think your bond issue today would be five percent? No. I think it would be lower. But again, I don't wanna be, I don't wanna get caught with our drawers now, so let's say five, five percent. Now, this is where I've had fun over the years. Robert Smith comes in, y'all know how, how long Robert wants to borrow money? As long as he can. You know how long Bill Brigham used to wanna borrow money? Supervisor Bill Brigham, former banker, y'all guess on that?
Short.
It's short.
Short as can. So what we have historically done, because I, you know, I don't wanna play referee with you guys, we start out and we put fifteen years in there. That's not ten, that's not twenty, so let's put fifteen years in there. At fifteen, if, at seven million dollars and five percent and fifteen years, the annual debt service is six-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars.
That's an amortized loan, right? You do it like the, like a straight amortization?
And, I'm here. City revenue, county revenue, schools revenue, I'm gonna drop a pin and come back there and tell y'all some stuff in a little bit. So, by our calculate, you, the, the, the schools' money never is figured into this, is, is paying them a debt. Given that Caesar, that is Caesars, when we do these fee and loo's, we calculate them, we run their mileage, and their mileage can change. I mean, this is not, this is, this is not the same for forever, it's school bills go up or down, it'll affect these numbers. But when the tax collector, cacher gets that money, we instruct them to pay the schools right off the top. And then everybody else gets their, their, their nut after that, okay? So the only piece of money that we can mortgage is this. If we, if we do this, we're looking at three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars a year over debt. We pay our bonds at fifteen, at five percent and fifteen years, and have three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars left over. Now, y'all are gonna have a decision made for seventeen or nineteen, and I don't care. You know, how do you split those up? Some of them go, "City's mileage is lower, county's mileage is higher." Well, you get into all this argument, city and county, love you both, okay? Uh, I think my friends in Clay County do it the best. They say, "Every man in for a dollar, every man out for a dollar." They split it fifty-fifty.
That's easy as well.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not telling you how to do it, David, you, y'all pick, y'all, y'all, if y'all differ, I don't care. I'm just telling you that-
I mean, you could do it feasibly, either way, except the county said, "We don't wanna participate, we could do the full deal, get a hundred percent of the fee," right?
Well, no, 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 county, county would, county would still get their fee and loo. They'd still get their fee and loo, that's, that's by law, but if they said, "We're foregone to let you have it,"
But if we're going to, if we say, if we fifty-fifty, we do three and a half, they do three and a half, then it makes sense to get fifty percent of the fee.
I'm just saying-
The risk.
I'm just saying, I've watched them, and Clay County's the, y'all always, you's been the, the little brother and all that. But Scott Ross, when he was mayor, and Robert Robinson, when he was president, came up with that, and it works great. But y'all do what you wanna do.
Joe Mike, that, that's a thirty percent? Thirty percent fee, or thirty percent fee loo?
No, sir. It's thirty-three.
Thirty-three, one-third.
And if you work for Harry Sanders, he makes me go out nine, that's more. You know what he's saying? He says, "'Cause that matters."
One-third's the minimum, right? The state, that you, by law-
By law.
Now, there are some places in the state, like Smith County, someone's gotten fifty percent on some of their fee and loo.
All negotiation, all negotiation. Yeah, what this represents is state debt.
But you expect would be one-third?
Well, I expect on a project like this, they're gonna get you a lot if I get you. But you can't go lower than thirty-three percent.
Right.
But again, thirty-three percent could have nine-ninety up there. He made me do that one day, and it's, I guess when people got money, look at different, I do. Uh, but anyway, so, so this is the number, but let's have some fun. Let's take this to twenty years. Then you got about four-hundred-and-seventy-four over. Before we go any further, let's scroll this up for full disclosure. All right, you see this? That's how much we make on the deal, okay? Every one of our counties, you speak ten percent. Every one of our counties that we represent in our contract with you says that we get five percent of every fee and loo project, okay? So you pay the schools, you pay us, and then y'all split if you do your deal fifty-fifty. The reason on that is, Bart Wild, our chairman back a long, long time ago, said, "These are big projects, we're bringing in a lot of revenue. Um, we got our costs paid for with our contracts, there ought to be some way that we get a bonus, a, a, a kick for doing what we do." I'm really up for negotiations in the contract, but I wanna point it out to you so you don't think I'm keeping that a secret, okay? All right, so, let's go back to seven, five, and twenty years. Let's do it at ten, okay? So you, ultra-conservative folks, do it at ten, hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. In other words, you got enough to pay your deals, you got hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. If you split it fifty-fifty, you got about sixty a man. Said another way, you break about even. You get the, you get the deal-
But in ten years, you get a dollar.
Get the notoriety. You get, yeah, oh, yeah, 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 you get the notoriety, you get the construction jobs, which will be substantial, uh, uh, cigarette sales, cigarette beer, uh, 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 hamburger sales, hotel runs, all that junk, and, uh, uh, but at the end of ten years, it's paid for.
Is there a reason to go longer than ten years if it covers the bond debt?
I'm just telling you-
That's a question from me to you.
Yeah, look, look.
Is there, is there a reason that we're not, do not use the Democrat Republican example?
Well, I, I am, I am, because fundamentally, fundamentally-
Okay, your debt, your debt service is gonna be lower the longer you go. Your payments lower, so that's more debt. You see, you count, count the general, that money goes, that's where that debt goes into general fund, is it going somehow?
Yeah, you do, you do.
Which side will it do it, right?
So, so go back to-
But we both gotta be at the county and the city, both have to be on the same page.
No, not necessarily. No, no, we can structure, if, if y'all remember when we did, when we did the university bonds, okay? Lyles, Lyles, well, refresh your memory, Dr. Hudner went out and did twenty-year bonds, and that wasn't in the bond. And Bill Brigham went ape shit nuts, okay? Because y'all hadn't signed the paperwork. Lyles County said, "We wanna pay our obligation of ten million dollars in ten years." We came to y'all, we went to West Point, so what do y'all wanna do? Leave it like it is, 'cause why? Costs you less per year, per month.
Cash flow.
Okay, cash flow. Lyles County is paying them, the bond issue's on a twenty, they're paying them on a ten-year deal. They should be escrowing the money, 'cause in year eleven, Lyles County ain't paying no more money, okay? And it's set up that way, if they're missplitting and all that, then somebody's gonna be in a world of hurt. But no, you can set it up. Chris? Attorney Counselor, if, 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 if one wanted to do twenty, and one wanted to do ten, I think, I think there's a mechanism to do that.
Well, and even if you did twenty, and I'm, I'm, I'm not an advocate for twenty, I'm, I'm a ten girl. Um, even if you did twenty, you can pay 'em off when they become callable.
Yeah, so, but, 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 but let's, let's go back to what-
Joe Mike, I got, I got more, more questions.
Well, but I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make a point of what you're saying. If, if one of you said, "God, man, you know, let's, let's call this a half a million dollars, and let's say we're gonna divide it fifty-fifty." If one of y'all said, "Man, for another two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to have, we could do some real good in our town or our county," it's your, it's your call, okay, go ahead.
Oh, but these are, these are, these are, we're gonna issue taxable general obligation bond.
I think that. Unless there's a measurable way, wait, oh, now, look, look, what you're spending the money on, we gotta think about this, Mr. Pace, what you're spending the money on is water, sewer, and roads, and those are- What you're spending the money on is water, sewer, and roads, and those are all tax exempt stuff. What we might need, what we might need to do is, is, is sit down and say, is there a measurable difference? And there wasn't when we did your last one. If there is in rate, maybe we, 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 we don't.
And having just looked at that, that particular issue with our cornerstone park bonds, the difference is, is minimal.
Oh, it's nothing now.
It's minimal.
But the, the bond repayment schedule of GO bonds is not gonna be saying it's an amortized loan, why? I mean, don't bonds pay off in different, is, is, or is it just a straight?
Depends on how you structure your bonds.
And, and, and bondholders, that's, they don't care, they want that, they don't, we've paid some all the time.
You get some, you get some old wheel women, it's depending on that income, they don't want you to pay that off, 'cause they buying them long coupons at the end.
But you say, you treat those bonds, you're liking loans for, for, and amortize it, but they're, okay.
That's kind of the concept. You know, it's not rocket science. So, 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 so let's talk about this particular project that we're talking to you about. We'll get you notice of intent, seven million dollars, two hundred and fifty, but there's multiple phases of the project. We're not asking you to commit to phase two, phase three, phase four, but let me tell you what we've told the company that we will do. We said, when you build your second, your third, and your fourth buildings, quite frankly, you could agree to this to be your fifth, your sixth, your seventh, your eighth. For every hundred million dollars you invest, we'll recommend a million dollars. So if a building costs two and a half million dollars, that's two, a building costs two hundred and fifty million, that's two point five million dollars. So let's, let's do two point five million dollars down here. In our model, on phase two, three, four, the net for the, the, the two which split down there, going by that assumption, would be about, about four hundred grand and change a man. And if they did phase three, replicated, phase four, replicated. Now, none of this has been finally negotiated, they may come to table and say, I want it, I want that two point five to be three point five, then we decide to do it, or we don't decide to do it. Okay? But, but what we, what we're proposing here is a way to attract a high-profile company and understand they're looking at the Southeast Conference, so it's not like they're coming. I'm not telling you they're coming. We're playing. The way we win is to beat everybody, okay? It's the only way we win. But, uh, we've got a plan here that will, at worst-case scenario, if you do the shortest term, break you about even. Pay off in ten years or break you about even.
Joe, help me out here. This is if we win the project, or is this to attempt to win the project?
No, 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 you won't do that, no, no. Your costs are largely, your costs are largely in the camp. There's a hundred and seventy-four-page proposal, thirty-year tax analysis, drawings, engineering cost estimates, gap charts, timelines, a whole nine yards on the project. Not a lot of money to spend to keep chasing it, just, I mean, travel, some sub stuff, not much. Uh, the only way you would do this is if they said, okay, we're on, you, yeah, it's all like Dr. Collins, you automate it.
So, Joe, another way to think about this, the notice of intent just hangs out there until you have the project.
Or twenty-four months.
This is a commitment.
Yeah, and, and until it expires. And then I will tell you that my advice for you and Rob will be, put a tickler in there and say, hey, we're four months out, you know, let's, y'all wanna renew this? And, and it keeps you, it keeps you with dry powder, so you can play for a bigger deal. Why all eighty-two, well, all eighty-two counties ain't gonna do it, 'cause all eighty-two counties can't win. Why more counties in the state don't do this is, is I've never been able to figure it out. Okay? Never been able to figure it out.
Any, any questions? I'm assuming you've, you've reached the end for the moment.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, unless they've got questions, I'm done.
Any questions from anyone?
How many, how many states are we competing against, or cities on this project, this particular project?
They should assume the Southeast Conference. So I don't think, South Carolina's in the Southwest East Conference, but I don't think. I think, and Texas is in the Southeast Conference, but I don't think. I mean, if you asked me to pick, I'd say Arkansas, Louisiana, Mississippi, Alabama, Tennessee, Georgia, and Tennessee. If you ask me to snapshot, put a light on me, put the gun to my head, so give me your best guess, that's it. That's it.
We're buying for one of the three sides, is that what you're saying?
No, no, sir, we're buying for the product now. They're gonna get, now, they're gonna build multiple projects. They're gonna build multiple projects. It's not one and done. Uh, they're gonna build a lot of projects worldwide. The question is, do you wanna make sixteen's or seventeen's project to build? I don't think we'd be sitting here talking about that, we're trying to be, we're trying to be this one, this one, yes, ma'am.
I, I wanted to just, um, for, for people who haven't thought this past the, the life of the bonds, at the, let's say there were ten years, fifty-fifty split, um, at the end of the bond capacity, the, the business is still there, rolling forward, the fee and loo goes away, they go on to the tax rolls at that point at a depreciated value, which you've got a rule of thumb for what that might be?
Yeah, 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 and, 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 let's, let's get this as a deeper question, and so, so let's talk about this. When we change the threshold from a hundred to sixty million dollars in the fee and loo, the, the Mississippi constitution says you can't give a tax payment for more than ten years. So we build this building, we ask for a tax payment, we can give it for ten years. At the end of ten years, it goes on the books at the, uh, uh, depreciated value with the industrial multiplier. Okay, that, that's all true, and, and, and the old rule of thumb is two point five, whatever you're getting in the fee and loo, you're gonna want to times two point five, and that's what you'll get. Okay? So the steel mill, we thought we were gonna make a million dollars a year on it, or we made a million dollars a year over debt the first phase, when it went off fee and loo, the county share went to about two point five million dollars. When we moved it from a hundred to sixty million dollars, we also added a rolling thirty-year concept to it. There's, the only rolling thirty-year concepts in the state are Nissan, Toyota, and Patcar, and Continental now, only four. Which means that as they add stuff, they get to counting, they don't have to meet the sixty million dollar threshold. The initial building, yeah, it's depreciated, goes down. Some of these projects, though, move equipment in and out in that ten-year period, every time they move new piece of equipment in, they get a fee and loo on them. Okay? Every time, and, and, and move, if they move it in and out in that ten years, that fee and loo starts over. The shell buildings, the electrical systems, the coolings, all those would go off. All, in this particular case, all of them wouldn't go off. Okay? The other thing that's a real can of worms that I wanna tell you is, is on the fee and loo, uh, we talked about the schools portion, we don't spend their money, they get a third of the money. Uh, what we're seeing is, it depends on the schools. So we're working with your schools right now to see, but, 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 but if you ask me my, my, my thumbnail schedule, what I see, the poorer the school district is, the less benefit these make for them. Said another way, Yokohama was supposed to have paid, on our models, were supposed to have paid the West Point Clay County schools nine hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. It's not, it's zero. Yeah. It's in the MAPE. It's in the MAPE. Uh, in the case of Louds County, the more wealthier schools, they're raking it off in a copper sack. You know, they paid for a new elementary school, twenty-six million cash. Okay? Uh, so there's, there's a flaw, it's not in the fee and loo law, it's in the MAPE law. And we are in process right now of identifying that, and we are working with our four school districts that we represent to see how it affects each and every one. There's, there is a twenty-seven percent threshold, Mr. Perkins, that has to be provided locally, and if it's not, if the, if the school district doesn't meet that twenty-seven percent threshold, then you don't get the net new money. And the poorer the school district is, the less likely that they're providing twenty-seven percent of their income from local taxes. I don't think it's a problem here, but I don't know. I know it's a problem in West Point, I know it's not a problem in Louds. I suspect it's a problem in Columbus, and I don't know about here.
Because they can get back to you when to, to know that, that calculation. You know when they'll be open?
I know that McCully, or where, where are you on the, the schools, and Chris Pace freaked out.
We should have anything ready to go for our meeting on Wednesday, and let's make a point to get back to them after next week.
We have a meeting in Jackson on this Wednesday. And it's not, and it's not just us, okay? There's about six regions of the state that are going and setting down the same, here's how our offices can be built.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
So, so I'm, I'm still not quite clear on what, what I was asking. Part, part of that fee and loo, at the end of the ten years, will go away, the, the building, the, the long useful life asset.
On every, on every project we ever do, uh, uh, it's a safe bet that in ten years, it goes up two and a half percent on this particular project, because they do change equipment out.
You would use a different rule of thumb?
Yeah, and I don't know what that rule of thumb is. Cost of building, cost of building, uh, 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 probably, usually we use sixty, forty building equipment, probably-
Flip it.
Probably flipped on this.
You say two and a half percent, sir.
What, what's in the figure?
Two and a half times, two and a half times.
Not two point five times, not two and a half percent.
Yes, sir.
Of, of, of what you were getting in it.
But until they hit a hundred million dollars in, in new equipment, there would be no new debt. And, and necessarily.
Yeah, yeah, you, you, yeah, you won't, we'll trick this, you won't issue the debt till they build that second building. It's not just money, it's, it, and we need, we'd have to specify.
So we won't, we won't necessarily collect our, our millage rate, but we will continue to collect fee and loo at some, some level without, without debt.
Without the debt, without, 'cause if you found it for ten years, any, any, any money you get won't be incurred by any debt. So if you get a penny, it'll be all yours.
Right, right. It may not be a full tax rate, but it's-
Vice Mayor, I'm gonna say budget share. Since you have a budget share, your man ring, what you, what you prefer, in ten, fifteen, or twenty?
I'm, I'm a ten-year fifty-fifty person.
Me too.
Joe, Mike, what's-
Pay for it, pay for it while you got it.
Let's get one, one topic at a time.
Pay for it while, while we know we've got that fee and loo, um, reduce our risk of things changing in the market, all that sort of thing, and just, just be done with it.
Alright, ma'am?
That paper done, you, that's ten, fifteen, what?
I don't know.
It's gonna show.
I don't know.
What was, I'm sorry, ma'am, what was, what was the question?
Newton, where he's from, did a fee and loo, he said, what, what term was it? And I said, I don't know.
Okay, alright.
I don't know, we can find out.
Bill, if you did twenty years, in ten years, that bond would be callable.
And if you've got the money sitting aside, if you've got the money sitting aside, you can pay.
Would have you some cash flow, something to consider.
Well, you'll have to come up with the money. But am I, am I correct in assuming there will be two separate bond issues? If we split it fifty-fifty, three and a half for you, three and a half for the county?
Yes, ma'am.
Alright.
And we can structure, one interlocal-
That explains it all.
That does the fifty-fifty split.
And then our, our debt.
That's what you did on the park. You both did your deal, right?
Right.
And you put your money in a box.
Alright.
But that, so the term really becomes an individual board's discussion and decision.
What you wanna do.
And what y'all wanna do.
Alright, so you're coming back to them, to the board supervisors on the seventeenth, you'll be coming to us on the eighteenth. The ask will be three separately labeled items for the agendas, I'm, I'm guessing, as opposed to collective effort. And then after that, as it relates to the Trinity project or the, the bond issuance, authorization, um, we would then have a document that would be an interlocal, or a, is that the right, okay? So it would be, it would be after-
Yeah.
The intent is said, this is what we're gonna do, then we would have the detail level of interlocal.
Yeah, and then what I would think is, Chris and Rob will be coming back to your subsequent meetings with the public hearing notice-
Right.
And authorizing publishing, and that'll take you six, eight weeks probably to do.
Yes. Alright, but that's what we can expect at the next-
And during that time, you should be working on your, your, your MOUs and all that stuff, and, and, and look, our guy, Chris, and your guy, Chris, and Rob, I think all work well together, uh, 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 and I think the three of them can knock something out to y'all's satisfaction and everybody's satisfaction, and then do it. But, but yeah, but it'll be authorization on the, now, the pad with, you know, the pad, the TBA match on the pad, the pad on the spec building, and then the, uh, uh, notice of intent issued bunch are the three action items.
Right.
And we'd like to come and get authorization on all of those. Now, you know, once we say the pad, we're gonna tell Saunders, we're gonna turn him loose, say, get ready, you know, but now, I don't think we're gonna start till it quits raining, and that might not be ever, but, 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 we're gonna, you know, I mean, once you do that, then, then we'll do like we do on everything else, once y'all authorize, we're gonna just come to oversee this, we'll come to oversee it, and, and advertise and do, and build a new pad, and then we'll do the same thing on the spec building.
Okay, alright. Anyone else with any questions? So we will look forward to seeing you next.
Seventeenth, eighteenth.
Seventeenth and eighteenth, alright.
Thank y'all for the time, good night, Wes.
Thank you. And board supervisors, y'all are welcome to stay, but I don't think you're gonna be interested, we're gonna take up the remainder of our agenda, so, um, we appreciate you being here and hope it was helpful.
What is due? Uh, is, is, uh, 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 is,
just gonna be Ben Mike's mayor.
Yeah, and, 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 and the other part of that equation is, you can historically look at them, and you can, on the power, when they say they need a hundred million dollars, they want, y'all don't have a hundred million dollars, you got about seventy-five. But they said they want the full hundreds and impact.
Okay, and guys, we're still on Facebook Live, so, so you might want to step it outside for any other conversation, so.
Sir.
All right, my board members here will take up our agenda, we'll, we'll be quick about it, because we've certainly taken longer than we normally do for a sufficient time here, so. Our meeting is gonna be, obviously, this coming Tuesday, it's gonna be February the fourth, it'll be our first meeting in February, our regular meeting in February. We have two sets of minutes that, as I understand it, Mr. Latimer's comfortable with.
I've been corrected and forwarded, Lisa, he's made him.
And we're all good, so consent if that works for, for the board members, and I'll let y'all holler at me if we, if I go too fast. I don't think I have any comments, at least I have no one to introduce, we'll put it that way, for, for, um, having on the agenda itself. Anyone have anything they want to put on the agenda as, as a notice for comments from the board? Okay? We have no public appearances, we have no public hearings. Under Mayor's Business, this is the Mayor's Youth Council, that, uh, they'll be going down to Hasburg, so consent for that, if everyone's comfortable with that. It is in the budget.
Hey, Mayor, can I, um, add us under public comments?
Uh, under public comments? This, this is not a time.
Civil comments, citizen.
This, yes.
Just show up and.
Yeah, you just show up and do that. Just show up and do that, that'll be fine. I'm sorry. Um, then, uh, we have the appointment to the museum board, and that is the, I think she was the only one who, who applied, so we do consent on that one. The next one is the issuance of the park bonds, which I'm assuming will not be consent, um, just because of the nature of the, of the subject matter, so.
Is it a dollar amount in that?
Um, is it not in here?
It's in the resolution, isn't it?
Yeah, we'll, we'll put the dollar amount, at least if you would amend that to reflect the dollar amount in that agenda item, please? Thank you. Um, under planning, we've got the independent consultant for architectural review, for, um, Mr. Jamie Ware is the one who, who provided us a letter, that'll be in your packet, so we can, if everyone's comfortable with doing that, we can certainly do it, or if you have a, have a conversation that wishes to be had at the table, we can, we can do that, right? Have anyone who's interested, concerned? How about consent on that then? Uh, then we have special event, which we know will not go on consent. Um, under engineering, we've got the lowest and best bid, this is for the SHS Bridge project, uh, which we have talked about before, is there anything, Edward, about that that's new that needs to be shared with the board at this point in time?
The only thing unique about this, we won't actually accept this until Thursday.
Right.
But this would kind of give the mayor authorization to, to execute the contract if everything comes in under what you're.
And the reason for that is because it's such a tight timeline, we're trying to get it done before school comes back, so, um, that's the reason for that, uh, timing to be like that, so if everyone's comfortable with that. Okay, we can do consent on that one. All right, claim stock it, we know that one's not a consent, then we have a mechanical service agreement, which, uh, Mr. Latimer has vetted and says is good for, um, taking care of our mechanical service, so it's sort of a basic item, consent, okay? Uh, and the next one is the ladder truck, chief, or is, yes, chief, you want to give just a quickie on that, on the ladder truck issue? That'd be fine, come up, and you'll be closer to the microphone so that it will be, it can be heard.
Good afternoon, or good morning, boy. Uh, we started this project in twenty eighteen, we're getting a ladder truck, sad to say we, uh, not got any, any, uh, fault on it right now, the truck actually is way behind, almost a year behind. I got with Chris about, the mayor about canceling the order, starting back over and getting a new truck. I talked to a company, actually, we, the company, we got the other truck problem, they can have us a truck here in October, but the, the caveat with that is, it needs to be on this board's agenda, so we need to rescind this one and actually put the other truck on this board's agenda if possible, to get it started by February, February, and we can have it here October.
Same price?
Same price.
Same price? Oh, okay, so you heard back from them?
We already have a new contract.
He, they're working on it now, we can, I can have the contract, I can have the contract by this afternoon.
Who's in ECO?
Rosenbaum.
You like it?
Yeah, we, we got a pump, the pumper we getting, uh, we getting, actually, getting